Good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the November 3rd Select Board meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we've got a very busy agenda this evening. We'll start with the mail, move on to Department and Board updates, including an exemption request and a vote on approval of a general obligation bond. We'll move on to public input and members' updates, then on to our public hearing on the FY '26 tax classification. That'll be at 7:00. At 7:30, she said hopefully, we'll move on to appointments, then to the Select Board discussion. We're going to discuss town hall hours for the day after Thanksgiving, potential food drive, the Shattuck Street comprehensive configuration for the remaining departments, and we'll talk about special town meeting. 8:00, we've got a Town Administrator's update, 8:15 minutes, 8:20 anticipated adjournment. Let's get started.
Standing. Thank you, Madam Chair. We've got some Town of Littleton public notice for current vacancies on various boards and commissions. Here we've got Agricultural Commission Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, Economic Development Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Personnel Advisory Committee, Sustainability Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals. And there is one appointment made by Littleton Electric Light and Water Department, and that is for their Finance Committee meeting. Okay. Sign up to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton. Scan the QR code. On the screen, or register Community impacts, public safety activity, transportation issues, town meeting changes, town events, public health concerns. Stay informed. Select Board office hours posting is coming up, is going to be Tuesday, November 4th, from 12:30 to 2:15 with-
Correction. Sorry, I had to change that. It's 10:30, 10 to 12 tomorrow.
10 to 12?
Yep, the website is updated.
10 to 12 tomorrow with Chairwoman Karen Morrison, Friday, December 5th, from 12:30 to 2:30. Is that one still safe?
Actually, that's safe, but I had it wrong. 10:30 to 12:30.
On the 5th?
For me. Yeah.
Okay. Correction, December 5th, from 10:30 to 12:30 with Chairwoman Karen Morrison. DPW still seeking snowplow contractors for the '25, '26 winter season. Packets are available at the DPW office at 39 Air Road on the DPW website, or call 978-540-2670 for information. Rates begin at $100 an hour and up to $153 an hour depending on equipment. Incentive signup bonus of $1,000. And we have a gift acceptance form from Chief Pennard, from Nancy Morrison, in the amount of $500 in memory of Sergeant Bussier, purpose of which the gift will be expended is with community policing. And that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy Morrison. That's very generous and much appreciated. Let's move on to the School Department request for exemption for Olivia Mano. Does anybody have any questions about that one?
Nope.
Okay, I didn't either.
Do you want me to read the, be the clerk tonight?
Yep. Great, thank you.
Moved at the Select Board vote to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract and approve the exemption for Olivia Mano as a municipal employee, accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we have a vote to adopt the form of vote prescribed by Bond Council relative to the approval of a general obligation bond.
So I will go over it. So we had our AAA bond rating in October confirmed, and the results of the S&amp;P rating are on the website now if you want to read them. The bid came, we came in with seven bids. The awarding bid went to Huntington Securities at 3.29 true interest costs. The total project authorizations for the senior center was 13.5 million. The project came in at 12 million 50,000, and with us using the premium and buying down what we're borrowing, let me look at my notes, we are borrowing 11,125,000. So, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, nice terms.
Nope. It's a 20-year bond?
Correct.
That's good. All right.
Moved at the Select Board vote to adopt the form of the vote prescribed by Bond Council, a copy of which is attached here too and made part hereof, relative to the sale of $11,125,000 general obligation bond to the town for the following projects. One, $1 senior center design services authorized June 12, 2021, annual town meeting Article 10, and two, $500 senior center design services authorized May 2, 2022, annual town meeting Article 20, and three, $12 million senior center construction authorized May 2, 2022, annual town meeting Article 20, and maturing November 1, 2045, to Huntington Securities, Inc., at a true interest cost of 3.2918486%.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public input and members' updates. Let's start with public input, please.
Wraparound's 25 Juniper Road. Town meeting, the focus. And just got to say thanks. I also, you know, it shouldn't go unnoticed, I encourage everybody to read the town newsletter. I think the town newsletter in November was just filled with appropriate information with regard to all the efforts that are put into pulling that off and making that happen, as well as throwing out congratulations for a very successful town meeting, and I couldn't agree more. I think the childcare was nothing short of spectacular. I want to make note that, I'm told, there were 126 kids not registered that were ultimately accepted despite the fact that efforts were asked of the public to preregister. 77 or 78 preregistered within the timeframe, and yet they didn't turn anybody away, and it was just outstanding. So I wanted to note that. The other part that I wanted to say is that crisscrossed Littleton a few times, found roads and people I'd never seen before. I was just, my mouth dropped, some backyards that I was welcomed into, that I just couldn't believe what I was seeing, the beauty and the people I met, and had really good conversations with some people that we don't agree, we probably still don't agree, but we listened to each other for a good 15 to 20 minutes, and give and take, and it felt like it was something very, very worthwhile. The other part that was very, very worthwhile was the next generation. Somebody's over there right now in the audience. A lot of good people come through, really good people, really want to participate in Littleton, and we all know we need them. And I don't know if Mark Corry can put up a photo that I asked of him, and it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But I just got to say, because all you were inside the room as the meeting began at 7:15, and I'm grateful that it was held off. There were 200-plus people in line at 7:00, and there's a photo, I'll eventually flip to some of you. At 7:23, the line was still way winding around. At 7:30, when I went out, the line was still easily 100-plus trying to get in. And I saw in the newsletter today, among the Select Board comments, that you're going to review what worked well, and you're going to look at what can be approved. And that's the spirit in which I want to offer comments and observations when you've got time to listen to them, read them, with regard to making it better, because all those people that lined up, I want to get them back. All those people that left right after the Shaker Lane vote, because it was past 8:30, and childcare was ending at 9, and they had to get their kids home, but I want to keep them coming back to town meeting, participating in the entire meeting. So, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Annalise Tabor, 291 Goldsmith Street. I just wanted to thank the town for coming out for Shaker Lane in a big, big, big way, both at town meeting and then at town election on the first. We had incredible margins. I cannot even believe it. So, you know, what a win for our future, for our children, you know, for our town, for prosperity. There's so many good things to think about. I'm seconding Rob in the childcare, I think, was just knock out of the park. Like, that was the number of people that used it. I've heard nothing, no complaints, which is unbelievable. So, bravo to everybody who was involved in planning that. I know that was not easy, but hopefully a precedent for future town meetings, especially ones that we expect to be really large, like this past one. I will say that, again, sort of seconding what Rob was saying with the line sort of out the door for a long time, there were rumors and panics and things that we were getting to capacity for the building, and, you know, sort of what happens if we hit capacity? Does the whole thing shut down? Do we have to reconvene in six months? Like, ah. So, you know, as the town is growing, and as more and more people are getting excited about democracy, which is a wonderful thing, I feel like, you know, perhaps a sort of a committee or some kind of study be done to, you know, what can we do better next time? What was good, what was bad? What are other ways that other towns are modernizing this kind of thing? What can we do within the law? Things like that. I'm sure you guys are already working on that, but I just wanted to sort of put that out there. And yeah, that's all I have, but I just wanted to thank everybody for really coming out for the schools. So, thank you.
George Sanders, 672 Great Road. Madam Chair, members, just want to make a few comments about the town meeting. I know you all know, in most cases, the town clerk puts in a lot of work. I guess from the time the town meeting started until the end of it, there was about 16 hours put in over four days. It was there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And of course, Saturday, I guess she was up here around about 5:00 in the morning, because I was down there at 5:10. So I put in 16 hours down at election there. And a lot of time, people just come in, and they sit down, they vote, get up and go out. They don't realize what all is involved. Actually, the town administrators up there, after the town meeting was over, throwing chairs up there to stack up, to get the cafeteria ready for the next morning, for the school. So there's a lot of work that goes in-
Karen Morrison was also there too.
Oh, Karen? Yeah, that's right. You were there. So, and also Mark was there as well.
That's right.
Yeah. So there's a lot of work that goes in there, and a lot of time our citizens don't realize how much goes in to these town meetings or these elections. And there's a lot of work that's required to set up those things. And I just want to commend the people for volunteering to help out. And I also want to thank all the members that helped spearhead to get the Shaker Lane through the stage where it is now finalized, and a school's going to be built now, because of the dedication and the work that was put into it, and more especially with the chairman, Finkham there, really put a lot of effort, soul into that. And being a member here in the town, he definitely looked out for trying to give the best information he could in helping the citizen to be able to meet this financial obligation. I thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Members' updates? Who wants to start?
I'll go.
Okay.
I also, I want to echo thanks to Diane Corry, who does such a good job that we don't even notice that she's doing her job. And that's high praise, because the meetings, the town meetings run like clockwork, as do the elections, and I think we take that for granted. So, thanks, Diane. I saw an interesting post on Facebook. We're going to discuss SNAP benefits a little later, but a restaurant in Westford, Soul Kitchen, is offering free meals to SNAP recipients and federal workers who are not being paid on Tuesday through Thursday. I thought that was an incredibly generous, and I also noticed that it has been shared 38,000 times. So, that is both a good business move and a really generous, generous thing to do. And I know that they were also very generous when COVID hit. I just want to, I want to call them out, because I think it's important for us to help out people who are less fortunate than we are right now. It's a tough time for everyone. I can only imagine being someone who can't feed their kids and how miserable that would be. And I want to finally just touch on something Rob said about not agreeing. I've had great conversations with people in this town that I don't agree with, and I think it's one of the strongest things we can do, is listen to each other, again, in this time that we're in. That's probably the most important thing. I know that I disagree with people that I respect, and I like that. And I try very hard not to yell at anyone. So, thanks for saying that, because you reminded me. I had a conversation today with someone who I didn't agree with, and it was a good conversation. So, that's all I got. I know, weirdly philosophical tonight, I apologize. Karen, there's a few pages here that you missed.
So, since the last meeting, I attended the Charter Commission meeting last Monday. They talked to the Board of Health and went over their responsibilities. There's a lot of discussion of whether the Board of Health should continue to be elected or appointed or some hybrid thereof. I also attended the BPAC meeting. They were asking about Mastot, said they were going to lower the speed limits on 119 and 110. We petitioned them a while ago to lower them.
Yeah.
And they said they were going to look at what the safety zones around there were, and we haven't heard anything back. So-
Notification, I've shared that. They came back with decisions.
They came back with a decision to lower it, but then they said they needed to see what the buffer zone around it was and haven't, so we should follow up with that.
All right, thank you.
Oh, like you mean on the hill by the-
Yeah.
Okay.
We had the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, where MHP is working on a plan for the Durkey property. They've done more, we have a grant through them, that they started some of the engineering work. The gist of it is they can get a bigger septic system in than they thought they could. We'll probably be starting to review an RFP for that property in December with the plans of posting it in February. I volunteered at the elections on Saturday, which is actually a great, it's a great experience. I encourage everyone to look at when Diane needs help and get out there, and you really get into understanding how, how she does her job more, and how, it's amazing how efficient the elections run on Saturday. But they need the volunteers, both, you know, sitting there and cleaning up at the end. So, I encourage when, you know, May rolls around, for people to sign up. As part of walking around and marking all the Littleton boundaries, I noticed that Boxborough has some really nice Right to Farm signs up, and we should look at what we want to do. It looks like they had a kids' contest, right, that the different signs, they have little pictures drawn on the signs from, and they're not all the same. So, we should consider doing something like that. Also, I attended the services for Sergeant Bussier on Friday. They were very well attended and very moving. My condolences to his family and the department. And on a more positive note, I attended the swearing-in ceremony for, from Captain de Blasio yesterday for our new fire prevention captain. And it was actually a lot of fun being there. Everyone was, it was a great ceremony. So, congratulations, Sam.
I'll just echo what everybody has said about the town meeting and how smooth they went, and, you know, just using the automated voting is just such a gift, and Diane and her staff coordinating with other towns to-
Make sure we had enough.
It was a positive experience. So, appreciate that.
She said she was going to come back and ask us for money for more clickers. I told her that's great.
$25,000.
But just your condolences, not just to the Bussier family, but to, you know, the whole town, the whole community, and touched a lot of folks in this town, and for that department and the fire department. Those guys, as much as it's red versus blue, they all step up for one another, and I think it's a time where you have to keep an eye on the folks that were most affected by that loss in our community.
Yeah, I want to echo everyone's notes regarding Sergeant Bussier. It's a shame, and my condolences to the fire department and the police department, and especially to his family. Regarding town meeting, thanks to everyone who showed up. It was fantastic to see democracy in action. I got a little choked up, seeing how many people were coming in, and that was amazing. I also want to thank the town clerk, and LCTV especially, for pulling together. The AV on this was huge. It was, I went in there a few days before town meeting, and they had a whole mock-up set up in their studio, and it was, I don't even want to know how many feet of cable they had run there, but it was extraordinary, and it was a great effort, and it went really, really well. So, thank you to them. I also want to thank all the volunteers who made the childcare possible. They, yeah, just like Annalise said, I didn't hear any, a single negative comment about the childcare, and so that was much appreciated. And thank you to Boy Scout Troop 1 for coming and spending time with the kids that were in the cafeteria. I know the kids enjoyed it. I know the scouts enjoyed it. And that's all I have. Let's move on. Got three minutes until the public hearing. Yeah, he's coming.
I got the end tape.
Yeah.
Appointment?
Yeah, we could do, we could do the appointment unless there's, if anybody has any questions about the appointment of David Outman to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I believe he's already an alternate, and we're just making him a full member.
Yep.
I've confirmed with the chairwoman, she's in support, I think, also.
Moved at the Select Board vote to appoint David Outman as a voting member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Two minutes to burn. Somebody play the Jeopardy theme. That's what you usually do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want to move to the minutes?
Sure.
Yeah, we can do minutes.
Any questions? Any changes, anyone?
I don't remember seeing anything.
I did not see anything in these, so.
All right.
Chuck, do you have anything for the minutes? Moved at the Select Board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the Select Board meeting on October 20, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a bunch of spots open for the town clerk's signature, but it's Gary, he's not here. Can the acting clerk sign?
It's-
It's town clerk.
Or town clerk.
This is a select board clerk.
Okay.
There is a clerk. There is a select board clerk.
Yeah, there are some select board clerks, right? So, can Mark sign for that?
No, Gary's appointed as the clerk.
Yeah, I think he has to.
So he won't be able to sign tonight.
When is he, is he around tomorrow?
I don't know. I don't know why, I don't know where he is.
I think he's in town.
Yeah, he swings by my office, because those have to go out tomorrow.
Give him some text.
All right, thank you.
All right, can we open the hearing?
Yeah, is there a, is there a statement for the, is there an opening?
It was the second packet that came out, had the-
Do you have it? Okay.
The Littleton Select Board will conduct a public hearing under Mass. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, on Monday, November 3, 2025, at 7:00 PM in Room 103, Littleton Town Office's 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, on the issue of allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal. The public hearing can be viewed live on Littleton Cable Television or online at cloud.castus.tv, VOD Littleton. All interested persons and/or parties wishing to be heard will be afforded an opportunity to be heard at the November 3, 2025 Property Tax Classification Hearing. Karen Morrison, Select Board Chair. And we're off.
Good evening. Kathy Miller, Chief Assessor. I'm going to be giving you information that will help you vote on the minimum residential factor in shifting the burden from commercial, industrial, personal property to residential, from residential to commercial, industrial, personal property.
Click on the packet.
So this is the packet. Do you have the-
Presentation.
... presentation?
Do you have access to email on that? No, I don't.
Do you want me to start while they're looking for the, or hold on?
That's up to you. Are you good to go ahead with that?
Well, I can just start with a little bit about what the presentation entails. The three components of tonight's classification hearing are to adopt a residential factor, to vote to adopt or not adopt a residential exemption, to adopt or not adopt a small commercial exemption. For the main purpose of the hearing, the Select Board will be tasked with determining a residential factor, which will determine- which will determine the percentage share of the tax burden to be allocated to each class of property. The five classes of our property are residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. I could go on, but I think some of it is easier for the public.
Yeah, he didn't test them on IT during the emptying process.
No, that's okay.
The left one, one on the left. Yep.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, I already went through the first slide and that is what we're doing here tonight. The next slide is some common terms, just in case anybody at home is watching and doesn't know, that new growth are additions to the tax base from new construction and property improvements. It allows the levy to be increased to cover additional services resulting from new construction. Levy is revenue raised through property taxes. Levy limit is the maximum dollar amount a town can raise in a fiscal year. It is the prior year's levy plus two and a half percent plus new growth plus debt exclusion. Excess levy capacity is the difference between the levy and the levy limit. Debt exclusion is a temporary increase to the levy to pay for capital projects. The CIP is a class that includes commercial, industrial, and personal property. And the minimum residential factor represents the minimum percentage the residential class can pay. So the fiscal year '26 levy breakdown. Prior levy limit, $51,368,660, plus the two and a half percent, plus new growth, plus debt exclusion brings us down to the $54,237,316. Excluded debt will be paid down by $241,812 from the DE stabilization fund. The total exempt, excluded debt would have been $900,000. This will reduce the single tax rate by 22 cents. The use of the debt exclusion stabilization account, beginning in fiscal year '17 through '26, has shifted a total of $2,886,000 of the excluded debt to inside the levy limit. So this is estimated new growth. What we have upcoming, everybody knows, the 550 King, 410 Great Road, Northern Bank. We also have a little bit of activity at the gas station over in Ayr. Fiscal year '26 is a certification year. And the difference between a certification year and an interim year is that in a certification year, not only are values being certified, but policies and practices of obtaining values is being certified. On an interim year, just values are being certified. Our new growth value decreased 45.71 percent. And I know that seems like a lot, but we'll talk about that at the next slide. With the Municipal Mionization Act, revaluations have been changed from every three years to five years. And our next recertification is fiscal year '31. So we usually don't have this chart in here, but I added it because when you look at the previous chart, it looks like that decrease in new growth looks pretty extensive. But we're really strong here in Littleton for our new growth. And it just so happens that last year was just a record year. We, you know, so it made that our, that decrease look pretty strong. But we're pretty good when it comes with surrounding towns for our new growth. And so that's why I wanted to put that one in there. For fiscal year '26, residential values account for 78.76 percent of the total property value. Commercial industrial takes up 21.24 percent. So the total value for fiscal year '26, you can see it in the lower left corner, is that $3,452 million. And you can see how they're separated amongst the classes. Total residential and CIP values increased in fiscal year '26 by $314,000, or 10 percent, over 2025. And this graph kind of shows you how for the past 10 years, we're looking as far as increases. And you can see that residential, the orange, going up. The levy and the single tax rate. If each class were responsible for their full portion of the levy, the tax rates would be the same. We'd have a single tax rate of 15.7. And as you can see, one of the things to keep in mind is whatever the percentage of the classes are in their value, that's the percentage of the levy they take up. So the split tax rate. A portion of the single rate residential levy is shifted to the CIP single rate levy. The amount of the shift is voted by the select board. And except in uncommon circumstances, the shift can't exceed 50 percent of the existing single rate CIP levy. The example used here is if the CIP levy was 10 million, the maximum shift allowed would be five for a total CIP level of 15 million. The levy and the split tax rate. Using last year as an example, 4.4 million of the 40.6 residential levy is shifted. You can see it on the graph is that gray piece and that's coming off the residential and it'll be combined with the CIP. So 10.77 percent of the single rate residential levy, or 8.38 of the total levy would be shifted. Since the CIP class is now responsible for more of the total levy, the CIP tax rate increases while the residential tax rate decreases. So you are voting on the minimum residential factor. An example, a residential factor of .892256 was voted in last year. This vote shifted 10.774 percent of the residential burden to CIP and left the residential class with a reduced percentage of 89.23. It shows that the last year's valuation of the town was that $3,138 million. The total levy was $52,271,000. And I put this one in because I like how it shows the before the shift. As you can see, before the shift, that would be a factor of one. And each one taking on 100 percent of their own burden, their portion of the levy for residential would have been that 40.6 and CIP would have been 11.6. But when you look down below, when we shifted that $4,380,000, it changed to the portion of the levy. So you can see it in a more direct way that now instead of residential taking 40, they're taking 36. And then CIP instead of the 11.6 is now increased to the 15.996. And you can see the percentage of the levy from the top to the bottom and how that changed. The average single-family home in 2026 is 770,356. In 2025, it was 694,868. It increased 10.86 percent, or 75,488. And in the bottom right-hand part of the chart, it shows that over the past five years, the average single-family home has increased by 229,000, or 49.31 percent. CIP property values. The median CI value is, excuse me, 852,000. And in fiscal year '25, it was 799,550, with an increase of 6.67 percent, or 53,400. So this is a tax comparison comparing us to '17 surrounding communities. And the communities that we compare ourselves to are like Boxford, Harvard, Acton, Groton. And those are just like a handful of them. And this chart just goes to show you, we're ninth, coming in at that 694,868. We're smack in the middle. And the orange line is kind of showing you where the median is. We're in the blue in how we're comparing to the average. And this one is showing the same chart except for with tax bills. Littleton's average tax bill for 2025 was 10,326. Again, we're ninth out of 18, so right in the middle. The median being that 10,528. And this kind of just shows you with those same 18 communities, we're, we're lying. These are examples of our previous shifts and what you have voted in over the past 10 years. These are your current 10 options that you'll be voting on tonight. And then the other part of the votes are the residential exemption, which we traditionally do not vote here in Littleton. It's two type of communities usually adopt this exemption and it's communities with large apartment buildings or resort communities. So you're shifting, so everybody who's residents in Littleton is shifting to the apartments. And this is generally done at the Cape and Martha's Vineyard and places that have large resort communities. Small commercial exemption, we usually do not vote this in as well. And this is the same thing. It's kind of a shift within a shift. It's allowing some of the smaller businesses that are under a million dollars and have employment of under 10 people to file for an abatement and shift some of their burden onto the rest of the commercial industrial base. If you want to go back and leave the 10, you can always leave the 10 options on because that's what you'll be voting on right now. They're also in your packet. Oh, thank you so much.
What a guy.
Put it out of his flask.
What was that?
Put it out of his flask.
Could you go back to the historical, the 10-year, the last 10 we've done? I think it's right before this slide. Thanks.
So I have a simple question, or I hope a simple question on this slide. If we, we say that taxes, the levy can go up two and a half percent plus new growth. But if we look at, we take our last residential shift, the amount went up $467, which is more than two and a half percent. So I'm a little confused at how.
So the, the last residential shift is using the same factor we had last year.
Yep.
And if you keep the same factor you had last year, then you're increased to the average taxpayers, that 467.
Right, which is more than two and a half percent.
Well, the values change too.
But the values changing shouldn't matter because the levy can only go up two and a half. That's where I'm confused, right? It's the levy that can go up. When the values go up, your rate goes down.
The property values went up though, a lot compared to last year.
But that means that the rate comes down. It doesn't mean your levy goes up. Right? Or am I missing something?
I'm trying to go over that.
May I interject? The levy changes, it does, the two and a half percent is not reflected in the amount of taxes you're paying. It's reflected in the amount that the town can levy. And then when you take the amount that the town is being levied and apply the current valuations on it, it can affect your taxes, it will affect your taxes differently. So the, the two and a half percent is not applied to your tax bill, but to what the town levies.
Okay. Another question, you said that the debt exclusion was saving 22 cents. Is that off of the rate that's in this chart or is that already?
I'd defer to Robin when it comes to debt exclusion.
The calculation's off of its $1,000 per, it's whatever the debt is and it divides it by $1,000 and it gives you a.
So in this chart, it shows the rate is, like the last shift says is 1401. So if we're taking 20, are we taking 22 cents off that number or is that number already lowered by 22 cents?
No, that, that has nothing to do with that. It's just what the shift is for this year right now. It's 22 cents. I'll send you the calculation so you can see how it's calculated.
Is there a recommendation?
So I don't have any recommendations. In some years where I see a lot of new growth that's coming that's residential and that impacts the shift. Because obviously the more residential, if that's growing higher than the CIP, we can only shift to 1.5 percent to the CIP. It's a max you can shift. So the more residential it comes, it's harder to shift. But when I was doing the outlook, and I was looking at 550 King and 410, it's hard because it's equal almost. When I, I did a projection a while back to see what the taxes roughly, I mean, the only thing we could do is very rough estimate, and it was almost right down the middle. And so it looks like my new growth coming up in the next two years is going to be split right down the middle. So it's kind of hard to determine or even, I normally don't give a suggestion, but I sometimes give you that outlook, but the outlook looks 50/50.
In other words, residential and CIP are going to grow according to your, your best guess is they're going to grow at the same rate?
Yeah, because 550 King is mixed-use and there's quite a bit of commercial there, which is a higher, you know, value usually. And but there's a lot of residential apartments, so they're just like the same. Like almost exactly 50/50.
When it's built out, you think it's 50/50 or as they're building it out, it's 50/50? Because they've shifted how they're building, so.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, that's a good question. It would, it would depend what they do first. And I don't know which parcels, I'm supposed to be separating the parcels come this spring. I've got a plan to subdivide it into 23 parcels. And I know that Marin had said some permits are coming through on a couple of the parcels, but I don't, I didn't ask which parcels they were. So that is a great question. I don't know if they're going to be, the residential components are going in first.
The commercial.
Commercial's going in first.
At least according to the LePoli company, the commercial.
Or the latest in the list, yeah.
So if that's the case, but then again, I'm not closing out anything next year, I doubt. You know what I mean? So the assessment date is always January 1st, so I have to have an occupancy permit by January 1st to get that, well, I can get a percentage of value, but when I'm getting really 100 percent of the value, it'll be closed out. So I doubt even if they start building this spring, that I'm going to get it for fiscal year '27. So fiscal year '27, I'll probably get the parcels themselves, the 23 parcels I'm subdividing, which are probably pretty close to 50/50.
I mean, I guess I'd stick with the last shift then.
Yeah, based on the outlook. It seems to make sense to me, although, yeah. Now that's where.
I don't see a strong, I mean, I don't see a strong reason to go one way or the other right now.
Right.
I was debating between that and more like option six, which moves a little bit more to the residential, but not, it changes the residential rate by a penny.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to give us more buffer room to shift back.
I have no objection to that.
I'd be all right with that as well.
Similar, similar philosophy, but I was more looking at five, more than, more than six.
So five would be one deviation, but in the other direction.
Frankly, it's just a matter of $31 in the negative to the residents. And it's, it's almost like semantics at that point, right? I don't think there's a, we're pretty tight here. I mean, it's, we're not in a bad position when it comes to the shift. So we've got some, got some leeway, frankly.
To go either direction in the future, yeah. I mean, I'll support two, five, or six. Any of those are acceptable. The, the difference between them is minimal. If someone wants to make a, make a suggestion. Oh, and we have the public, the public can speak too.
Anybody have anything else before I open it to the public for now?
I'll interject as they go.
Any public comment? Any public comment?
George Shannon, 682 Graywood. He said that you support 2, 5, or 6. 2 is what it was last year's shift, which is the 1401, correct?
Correct.
And the other one is the 1397, which is 5.
Correct.
And 1402, which is 6.
That's right.
My question is this. If you did a 1397, how would that affect the town overall?
None of these have any, well, none of these have any direct impact on the, on the levy. It would only be potentially secondary impacts like people's taxes are too high so they move out, or commercial taxes are so low that more businesses move in. But it's pretty hard to predict that a change of $8 a year is going to have a big effect on residential or commercial real estate, in my opinion.
Well, I was just, I was just looking at, at what the tax rate is now and what we're looking forth to come and to play, say, the next four or five years here, I guess, before we can really get anything that's going to mount significantly in terms of income coming into, to the town. So, yeah, I, I, I think it's okay to, pity is not a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on the, just on the general growth, is 550 back up to where it is considered new growth with their, with the leases going in, or are we still back to?
So 550s, I think they, I only have, I leased a little bit of vacancy, but they're not at full capacity by any means. So you're meaning like at one point IBM was 60 million, and right now my assessment is around, yeah, where, it's going to be a while before we get to the 60 million.
So it's just the new parcels are the new growth?
The new parcels will be the new growth.
But the existing buildings are going to not be new growth for some time?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I'm not going to ever get any new growth on the two existing buildings.
Okay.
New growth is new construction, so those, I'll be able to get the value back up to what they should be and maybe even a little bit more because they've been down for so long. So with the, you know what I mean, current market being increased, I might be able to get a little bit more. But that's never going to be new growth.
You can also get a little bit less because they, they may be not, they're no longer a Class A, you know, there's other...
That could be, that could be also, yeah. But keep in mind, it, it's still, we, we want to get it full capacity because it's going to change that CIP and it's going to bring our commercial, industrial, personal property, that value up. And when you show the pie, it's bringing, we, we want more on the CIP portion. So that we can shift, because when that CIP portion gets lower, it doesn't give us any room to shift. So, yes, we would love for that to come on full value. Yeah, I look forward to it getting to, back to where it was.
Can, can you estimate where is it percentage-wise compared to where it was when IBM was in, fully installed? Is it at 50%, 25%?
I think I'm at like 40 million, and at the highest, it was, it was 65.
Wow, so...
So if you want to do that math.
Yeah, that's actually bigger than I thought, that's significant, okay.
So just for a point of clarity then, if, let's say it's 40 now and they sign another lease and now it's worth 45, where does that, how does that 5 million affect any? How does the additional growth, the increase in the value of the property, you said it's not new growth?
It's not going to be new growth, but it's at, so say if I release, say one more, two more tenants go in, and I'm able to release some vacancy, and I got it up to 50, 50 million.
Yep.
That's just, the only thing it's going to affect is my CIP portion of valuation, it's going to make that bigger.
So that means that the...
But no new growth.
Right, but how does, but it's not, does that mean that the commercial rate effectively goes down? Or you're collecting that much more? If it's not new growth, where does it fall in the levy?
I guess I don't know what you mean, it, it, it's the valuation, so yes. I mean, it, it should be allowing the tax rate to come down just a, a little bit.
The commercial tax rate will come down.
Yes.
You're just spreading it out, you're spreading that amount of levy out across.
It's how much you can spread it, there's more, yeah, there's more in that portion, so you're spreading that portion of levy because we showed the parts.
So over the course of the year, if, if they sign another tenant, then the commercial rate will go down, but the residential rate will stay the same.
Well, you guys can shift more if you want, I mean...
But we can't do that in the middle of the year.
No, you can't do it in the middle of the year.
But the...
But it depends, because it has to be there by January 1st. Keep in mind, January 1st is the assessment date, so I get to release that vacancy for next year if a tenant comes on for January 1st.
And if a tenant comes on for January 2nd, then you, we don't recognize any value for the entire year?
Unfortunately, no.
And thus it is, it has always been.
It, it is a hard fact, but the assessment date is January 1st. And that's when every assessor in Massachusetts, your valuation is as of January 1st.
So I, I will tell you, I was leaning a little more towards the option 6 because I think all of the commercial properties are going to be assessed more anyway, or a large portion of them will be assessed more anyway, just because the sewer is going to be hitting them. So it's cutting them a little bit of more slack this year as their rates are going, they're, they're just going to be hit.
They're going to start paying the betterments, yeah.
Right, or more of them are likely to pay the betterments, I think, than residential.
Those that are in the district.
Right. But I'm fine with...
Well, I, I mean, my rationale, because we're talking, you know, 25 cents or whatever, yeah, pennies. The fact that anytime we, anytime anybody stops us at the grocery store or wherever, they, they talk to us about the rate per thousand.
Yeah.
1397 sounds better than 14 anything. So, I mean, and, I mean, that's, that's, because they're so tight, I just, I just...
Yeah. I'm okay either way.
Acton's at 16, 2025, 1667, Ayers 1196, Westford's 1350. Just for a little perspective, just because that's, we're always compared to those around us, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fine with 1397, if you want to, if you want to make a...
I'm not going to die on the hill, Matt.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not either, I mean, I think we can...
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it too, I was just saying what my rationale was.
Yeah, that's, that's a good rationale.
And with the, with the debt exclusion coming up in a couple of years, my thought was that we might want to save ourselves a little room for when that kicks in.
Okay.
So that's more, moving more towards 6, or more towards 5?
Leaning more towards 6. But again, it's not anything I'm willing to do.
All right, let's, let's, um, let's make, let's, let's, uh...
Close the hearing.
Oh yeah, we have to close the hearing.
Go ahead.
And Chair, to the presenter here. What happens if these buildings become full? Like IBM was there? If he gets more contractors in there, more contracts into that building, this building is filled up? Would that shift the amount of money? I know it's, it's not new growth, but would that shift the amount of valuation back up to where we started picking up the tab to pay the difference when it dropped?
Yes, so you had me look at that, you had me look at that a little while ago. Yes, I mean, if you're looking at just IBM, yes, that's what will happen. It'll, it'll be full value and the portion that everybody else had to pick up when we lost them gets redistributed.
But it doesn't set the pie, essentially, right?
No.
Unless it's on January 1st, that's when we distribute.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion.
To close the public hearing.
Oh, that's right, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Karen's an aye.
And I'm going to move for option 6. I'm going to move that the select board adopt a residential tax factor of, drumroll please,
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Yes.
Chuck?
I'm going to vote yes just for consensus.
Thank you.
Karen's a yes. And Gary, I just want to say, let us know that he would be fine with that as well.
Okay. Do we need to vote on the exemptions as well explicitly?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone feel like we need to debate the exemptions?
I don't think we should go, I think we should follow, follow in on the past.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote not to accept a residential exemption.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. Mark? Matthew?
Yes.
Chuck?
Chuck's aye.
Karen's a yes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Chuck?
Chuck's aye.
Karen's aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew, thanks for keeping it chuck-proof.
All right, let's move on to select board discussions. First point is town hall hours for the Friday after Thanksgiving. In the past, at least since I've been here, we have deemed that a day off for the employees.
Madam Chair, coincidentally, day after Christmas is also on a Friday, if you want to include that now.
Day after Christmas is also a Friday?
Can I jump in with something?
Sure.
I, I understand why we've done it in the past and then every year we've debated it and that's what we're going to do, we should do it, but we should either, either make the change in the employee handbook and make it a real holiday, or we should let people earn, earn the day. If they want to volunteer four hours at a, at a charity or something like that, just so that, it's, there's X number of holidays that we, we grant for employment.
I'll say that I remember sitting around and clicking on the website for the executive office, waiting to see if the president was going to grant the Friday after off because if they, federal employees got it off, federal contractors got it off, so. I, I would second that, I think we should create some certainty. If we're going to, if we're going to keep doing this, I think we should go ahead and make it a policy. Yeah.
I can't recall a time that I've been on the board that we didn't give the Friday after Thanksgiving off.
Really?
For the last five years, we, we've done it every year, I believe.
That's what I understand from what, aside from what Scrooge is going to say, I can...
Do you volunteer work makes you a Scrooge.
Give back and earn the day.
It depends where you volunteer.
Fair, excellent point.
Is that charitable or not? Keep going, I want to...
No, that has been, that has, but that has been the, that has been the past practice.
It has, but it hasn't always been the past practice. It wasn't, it wasn't under Keith, it wasn't under Nina, it wasn't under Anthony until like the last year of Anthony.
That could be, right, which is my first year on the board, so it might be that I, I brought this...
You're the trendsetter.
The new cruelty. It's mine.
The anti-Screuge?
But I think, I think the day after Thanksgiving is always, since it's always on a Friday, was easier to make a policy.
Yeah.
And the Christmas thing, we'll have to take that as it comes, depending on where it falls in the week.
I agree.
But I would, I, I mean, I, yeah, I don't know.
In the past, the decision from this conversation has been, when, when we were on the fence essentially, was that a lot of other departments didn't have the day off, you know?
You know, put it into the union contract, so let's treat everyone fairly.
Correct.
I like your idea, Chuck, of giving people the day off for volunteering for the day after Thanksgiving. I think that's a reasonable way of doing it, rather than just a day off, right? I'm not in favor of the day after, after Christmas, I just...
It falls when it falls.
If, if it's, if Christmas is on a Tuesday, you're going to say we should give them Christmas Eve off because it's Monday? I mean, we're going to be on this all the time. And then there's departments like the library that are on Sat, open on Saturday, so they're going to get Thursday and Friday off, but are going to be here on Saturday. So everyone's different, so...
I'm going to, I'm going to, I, no. I don't, I don't agree with that at all, I mean, folks know who they're signing up with, they know what their job terms are. We're not grant, we're, nobody's asking to grant all the exempt employees, you know, all the union contract terms, right? And nobody's, nobody's telling...
That's why we have a personal bylaw.
Well, but not the day off, right? They're not making, they're not making double overtime, right? There's, there's, there's certain pluses and minuses that go with whatever job you take. And to say that, you know, we can't grant town hall the day off, the day after Thanksgiving off because everybody doesn't get it off, I don't, I don't think that washes. Not for me. Hmm?
Don't give him no gifts.
He called me Scrooge. I mean, it just, it hasn't always been the way, and it's, you know, kind of gentle road maybe, but... I, I'm with you on the, I've already stated my opinion on how they can earn the day. It's like, used to be no shave November for the police of fire, and now it's like, no shave. But it was for a fundraiser, it was, they, they had to give money towards cancer research or, you know, whatever, whatever charity they chose within the cancer realm. But the Christmas one, I think, is something that we can, if, if we choose to do it this year because it is a Friday, so be it, but I don't think it's something that we should say every, every year.
I agree.
I would agree with that part. Explain to me how this, how this charity work-off would work?
I don't think we could get, I don't think we could execute it this year, frankly.
Okay, but in theory?
How would you enforce that?
Monitor it. Yeah, I mean, that's, it is, administrative supervisors would have to monitor it. You know, if people want to do lows and fishes, they want to volunteer delivering meals on wheels or cradles to crayons.
But is it like, I, you know, so I worked, I volunteered eight hours at some point in this year, so I should, so I, now I qualify to get the day after?
You specifically do it, you get it authorized by your supervisor and there's some level of trust there. I don't think we have to fill out permission slips or...
Right, right.
So volunteering is doing something at your own accord? So when you're sitting there saying, well, you don't have it off, or you can volunteer for something. It's like, it's like my parents used to say, oh, you're going to volunteer for this, by the way.
The private sector does this all the time, they get days off, they give volunteer days.
I'm sorry?
Private sector companies give volunteer days off.
This is not the private sector.
I know.
We can't compare it, it's apples and oranges.
I never got that in the private sector, I've never seen that.
It depends on the company, like, I know...
I get it for my, at my job, I get, we get five, five days a year of time off if you, if you spend it on a volunteer basis.
So this would be, everyone would go do charity work on the day after Thanksgiving?
No, it's like, you give them like two months to, to earn your, your day off.
It's like, well, I went to a parochial school and we, on Fridays, like, twice a year, if we gave $5 to whatever the charity of choice was, we could wear jeans on that given Friday. Or dress down day or something like that. No, just, it's, people can opt in, but the thing with that is, seven people in the town hall decide to do charity work and the rest of them show up to work and how efficient is town hall? I mean, it's, I'm not saying I've got the solution, but I do think that there should be...
I, I think giving them the day off and encouraging them to do volunteer work is good enough for me.
Message enough, yeah.
That's great.
I'm good with that as well.
Let's do that. But let's give them the day off Friday this year.
Thank you.
After Thanksgiving.
And talk about, putting language in the, in the handbook.
Yeah.
That trades, like encourages people to do a day of volunteer work and they could take the Friday after Thanksgiving off.
Christmas?
Voluntold, you are voluntold. Sorry. Shut up.
You calling him now?
I thought I could end.
Thanks, Chuck.
So can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So I'm fine with that, but town hall is closed in the future, like if we do the volunteer thing? And so if somebody didn't choose to volunteer, they'd have to take their four hours vacation?
That's why I said, I even ironed this whole thing out. I'm just.
Yeah. Just putting that out there. There's always that one or two people that just, I'm not, just saying.
You volunteer, if you wanna, if you're volunteering for yourself, you're not doing it because you have to. You do it because it's the right thing to do.
It's a suggestion.
And I'll, I'd be fine.
I mean, some organizations, I'm talking about private sector, some organizations actually have like a day of service where you clean up a park or.
Yeah.
Everybody does something together.
Right.
And then they're on the day that way. So, I mean, I think we all realize that this isn't the private sector, but there's ways of doing things that do cross over and it doesn't matter what fruit it is. Apples, oranges, mangoes.
Pineapples.
Be clear, we're talking about bananas here.
Gold bananas.
Your bananas. All right, I'll take a motion to grant the day after Thanksgiving off as a start.
Second.
Select board vote to close town hall Friday, November 28th, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy the day.
Yes, Chuck. And then the day after Christmas, how do we wanna?
I'm not in favor of that.
Move to the table for further discussion or can I get a second?
Why don't we wait? I think that's fine. Let's wait and see what Gary, as our personnel guru, has to say about it.
He might have an opinion.
Yeah.
Because I'm not sure it'll pass right now.
Hmm?
If you guys were in favor, then I'm not sure it'll pass right now.
Yeah. All right, let's table Christmas until, let's put on the agenda for the next meeting, just for certainty's sake. Let's talk about a food drive.
I'm sorry. Is that SNAP? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this is something that I will say that came upon weekly meetings with the chairwoman, that making a suggestion of doing, of having different locations within a number of different buildings here. For, because of the upcoming, at that point, the upcoming SNAP benefits were going to, were gonna cease as of Saturday, November 1st. And with that said, Tony got together with Liz and they, Liz put together, as part of in your package, you have the resource list that is there. There are, there are, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get to that. There are locations throughout various buildings. We've got, I believe it's the library, fire department, there's already one at the police department, over at the council aging and here at town hall. We do have drop-off bins that we could, that we could do that at. And in talking with, so during the department head this morning, it was something that we did discuss with the partial funding with SNAP that was approved and continuing that. But considering it's coming up in the holidays, we would suggest if we want to have the food drive through the holidays for people and at periodic times that we'll drop it off at Loews and Fishes. Yes, thank you. And, but we would absolutely advocate for that internally. That's how you would like to do it.
Just jump in, just real quickly about Loews and Fishes. They actually do have some challenges within organizations. So the treasurer's office, the accounting office and the assessors' office, they each get their own neighborhood bag.
Yep.
So we could do something with it. Michelle Bybert, there's a team that do different functions and events and stuff that involves the employees, so it could be something that could be fun as well.
Could this be two of the volunteer hours?
I knew you were gonna say it.
That was gotta be preemptive.
That's a great idea, yeah.
I think that would be a fun thing and knowing the team that we have working for the entire town, I think it would, everyone would really, would be excited about it.
That'd be great.
We could include LWD and school departments.
And stuff like that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
One hundred percent. Yeah, absolutely.
I just had a point of clarification. The food donation boxes that are listed in the packet are town hall, fire station, police station and the library. The senior center isn't listed.
Okay. She did mention it this morning, I thought.
Yes, she did.
Yeah.
And I thought Park and Rec, did they have one there as well?
I didn't know. What they had is they had the Eagle Scout food pantry.
Pantry.
Oh, okay. The little pantry.
Right.
That's not, that's not a drop-off location, is it?
Well, yeah, it is, actually.
Oh, is it?
If you want non-perishable stuff in there.
There's only so much room though.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it's limited, very limited.
Right, that's what I guess I'm getting at. If someone's.
Yeah, but for a larger volume, no.
Okay, okay.
Can we talk a little bit about the logistics of how we'll be getting the food to Loews and Fishes? And who's gonna be picking it up and that kind of stuff?
Okay. We can, I'm sorry, Tony, yeah, go ahead.
So Liz and I discussed on a weekly basis, we would go out and check all the bins and as part of their ongoing back and forth with the food pantry, we would deliver those goods to the food pantry. And in the next few weeks, so we'll monitor more closely. More, say twice a week or so, just to gauge, but that's the game plan. They are doing runs up there now. They've had to increase their runs as well. And with that, you know, again, they would deliver to that pantry.
This is to the location in Davin's?
Correct, correct.
Another question I had is can we include a QR code on the bins so that folks can do a cash donation if they prefer?
Absolutely.
Good idea.
You hear a lot that, does Loews and Fishes have a QR code that we could put?
Probably.
I'm pretty sure they do.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be a location at Kings, at 36 King Street?
Yes.
For drop-off?
Yes, makes sense. I mean, to what Chuck's suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, yeah, school department can do this.
So do we have a feel for how the Eagle Scout bins are working out? Are they staying well-stocked? Are we having?
No, they're empty. I believe that was word, that was word today at the department head meeting that they're all empty. So that's where we are at this point.
So there's one here.
Correct. There's one at the Baptist and then there's one over there. There's one at the 36.
The Baptist church is a different.
No, congregation, is it the?
The Baptist church has their own pantry.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, it's stone soup.
I thought he put one at Congregational Church?
He did, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
There's one at 36.
And then at 36 King Street. So if anybody wants to bring some non-perishables to the little pantries, that's where they're located.
Right. Great, good job.
Yeah, thanks for pulling it together.
No, thank you, no, thank you for the suggestion. It's great. I can, if Michelle doesn't have Patty's number at the.
I have Patty's number too.
Good, thank you though. Good idea.
What's the anticipated rollout, like sometime next week or?
No, they're already in place.
This week?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. So we can send like an email blast with, I'll ask Michelle to coordinate that or Brianna Ashley in HR to coordinate that, send out an email blast and let the games begin.
Great.
You do realize, select board donations comes to the town administrator's office.
Let's just clarify that right now. I'll just fill up the little pantries.
I'm gonna sign each can, so everybody knows.
That's the spirit.
That's not charity.
I would just add that in addition to the SNAP thing, which is a huge need, the federal shutdown is also, you know, it might feel remote, but there are absolutely families in Littleton that have lost one or both of their salaries through the federal shutdown. And they have now hit the thirty, thirty-day mark and so they are continuing to work without pay.
There's 580 families in Littleton before the shutdown that are on SNAP. So it just, yeah, 100%.
Thanks again. Let's.
I don't see a QR code on Loews and Fishes' website, but I'm sure that that's easy enough to set up.
Okay.
Well, they have a donation page, right?
Yeah.
And then we just, yeah, just create the QR code.
We should also make sure that our boxes are stocked.
You mean the Eagle Scout boxes?
Eagle Scout boxes.
I'll take the one at 36 King.
After our massive audience has heard from us that they need stocking, I'm sure they will all be full within a matter of hours.
Fair enough.
All right.
Thank you.
Comprehensive configuration of the remaining departments here on Shannon Street.
Now the fun starts.
Yeah.
Okay, what you have before you is the outline of the basis of the request. You've seen the narrative, the challenges that the team faces on many different levels for the way the configuration and the structure is right now between the aging, the aging building to the utilities, some of the utilities and the fact of they work well together in a cohesive unit. And by doing any type of splitting up between floors, it's fracturing the operations, which makes it already all the more difficult. So you have four options before you. The first option would be to move the, move the lands and buildings, everyone down there up to where parks and recreation has just vacated and vacated from before moving in to 36 King Street. Options two and three are other, the other third floor, which is where the north, which is where the school department, the administration, had vacated before moving to 36, 36 King Street. Option three is splitting, splitting it up on the first and second floor. And you can see from the town hall space optimization comparison, if you wanna follow that. And option four is to have them stay in the existing locations and potentially look at making the necessary investments there also. You also.
Current state.
I'm sorry?
Current state. That's four?
Correct.
But you were saying that they're split up?
Fracturing, if they would go to, there was a, in previous discussion, there was the potential of looking at going to the first and second floor. And that is basically fracturing the team up as part of a handout. This is also inclusive of the move with lands and buildings is, as you can see from the plans, accounting, because I think it's important that all of the financial team is on one floor for Robyn's oversight, and which moving the accounting would be down on the second floor. And also more importantly, it provides an opportunity for HR to move across the hall to where they currently are, so for confidentiality. Right now, there is zero confidentiality and as you all know, within HR, that is discussed. Internal meetings. Happen at this point, whether it's a phone call, someone dropping in, you name it. And which also leads that we, and part of that is, right now Diane Dickerson is part in the existing accounting area. Diane would move across the hall to the town administrator's office and then Tony would, and that's, this is the handout that I provided. Tony would take what is currently my office, the dividing wall that separated Lisa from what was Tony's office right now would be removed. So someone would walk into the waiting area and it would be a straight shot right there to be able to see. And my office would be where the current HR office is with a, as you can see to the right. So part, another part of the, the information that was provided with you within the packet is the bids that we received for the work. Now, this work is only identified for the moving to option number one, is to fit that out. And you saw that the cost proposals came in between 169,000 all the way to 407,000 and everything in between there to do the work that's there. None of that includes anything to be done on the third floor within the town administrator and that would be done in-house.
This is third floor?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
So, sorry, so this is the cost of moving, basically moving all of the land department up one floor?
Correct.
Okay, into the old library, main floor of the old library?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. And then building, putting in offices and identifying, you can see from the plans that you have on your, in the packet. And this is, that has been something that has been discussed and you can see that those, that would be the configuration. And that would give the opportunity for, you have a better, you have better access from two ways to get to there. You would have it right off of the short driveway that's in front with the sliding doors. But for individuals who wanna park in the back and they are aware, they still have those stairs right there to get access if they wanna go upstairs that way. And then they would, they would be walking in into an area where there would be administrative staff being able to help them and direct them or anything like that.
So we would keep that door unlocked down there, even there's nothing on the first floor?
Yes, yes, to give them access in the event of someone wanted to park back there instead of walking around, especially during inclement weather.
Why wouldn't we send them through the elevator?
They have, they could take that, they have that option also if they.
I mean, you're sending them to a floor that's vacant, right? If there's nothing else on the floor, why would you allow them, why would that floor not be locked?
To get access into the building, then go to the right, but they would not, then there would be something set up so they could not go to the left.
How are you keeping them from the left?
Well, that would be part of the in-house things that we would be doing to make sure that they don't go to the left. That would be, whether it's configuring the door, locking it, anything like that. Putting, you know, installing the necessary locks or anything. That's not a, that's not a big effort.
It sounds like we're creating more of it. It's confusing now, according to some of the documentation. And now we're saying, you go through this tunnel, then you go up some stairs and eventually you'll walk into people and that's where you can do your business?
Tunnel?
Yeah, essentially, come through the hallway and then you're gonna block off, you can't go left, you gotta go right. So you go up the stairs and you walk into people and that doesn't, to me, doesn't sound like it's solving a problem. It's creating another problem.
Okay, so you're walking in the door and you're going to the left, you go to the counter to, instead of going to the left, you go to the right. Okay, so you're walking in the door and you're going to the left to go to the counter to, instead of going to the left, you go to the right. You're two steps in and you, you're walking there right to the stairs instead of going to the left to the counter. I, in, in, in my, in, in my opinion, I don't think it's, uh, and I, I, I respect your opinion. And, uh, but it's just, it provides a second, second egress for, for people if they wanted to, uh, if there's, let's say if there's no parking on the side or anything like that and they, and they park in the back.
I think Mark's point was a good one, just use the elevator. That's what people do for the library.
Okay, so then they, then they can absolutely use, use, use the, uh, use the elevator over, uh, through the, through the other entrance.
Is there any way to get in off of the front entrance that would be ADA accessible or?
Yes.
Not really.
Yes, there is.
There's a, there's an old lift that barely works unless they're repairing.
No, it does not because it had to get inspected. It had, every year it gets inspected and, and facilities had, had expressed that and said, "It is fine."
Like a shaker lane lift or like a chair up the stairs thing?
It's a, goes up barely, um, we've had, the library had people get stuck in it before and it's not very.
It's next to the stairwell.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
So most people would want to come in through the back? If they were?
If that.
If they had, um, accessibility issues.
Right, fair enough. So, um, the funding source available is what, uh, what was, was discussed is, uh, the, uh, what we did, I believe, at town meeting, um, last year when we basically took the combination of all, a number of different capital projects that were done and there was, and there were balances. So we put that into, into one account and it has to be built on, um, construction. It has to be capital, building, building, uh, exactly. And, uh, there is, and I'm, I'm gonna be conservative, so let's, there's about, let's say there's a hundred and fifty thousand balance there because some money has been spent out of that, uh, towards thirty-six, thirty-six King Street. What we would, uh, with, um, support from the board, in order to make it the most efficient and identify areas we would to cut back, we would then put it out for, to bid again, but we would do, add alternates such as painting, such, uh, and there are other, other things that facilities and, uh, and Tony and, uh, and the building commissioner could, uh, identify to make, add alternates in, in a priority order to get us down to, to be within, within the budget area. But also if you, if you notice from the proposals that, you know, looking at options two and three based upon the, the cost estimates, uh, back in the, you were looking at, um, approximately three hundred thousand dollars plus in, in those and options number two and number three, each one of them would, uh, would do that.
But options number two and three, you get the three hundred thousand dollars by saying you have to upgrade the elevator. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's how you're getting, you're saying the elevator is too small for a gurney, which has been too small for a gurney forever. And the senior center was up there surviving with it. What, if you take out the elevator, which is what they say is the big factor there, what are the costs for two and three?
I don't know that. I don't know that. And I, uh, in terms of stair and elevator access improvements, I'm not, uh, I'm not exactly completely sure about that, what that would refer to.
So I'll say that I'm not opposed to doing this, but I don't think we should be spending any money on this at this point. This is not how we do capital projects in town. They're, they're all vetted on Saturday, on the super Saturday, we go through all the capital projects. This should be in line with every other capital project. It shouldn't be coming out of cycle, being money spent outside of our normal way we do capital projects. So if, if this gets budgeted in, the budget for next year is a capital project like every other one and gets vetted by the finance committee and the finance team and comes up in February and we say, "This is something we want to fund." We go to town meeting and say, "This is how we're gonna fund it." But we shouldn't be doing this off-cycle.
I agree with it. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've already expressed my opinion of. In, in order to accommodate contractors and put the building department together, we, we moved them to the bottom floor because it was gonna be better for contractors. There wouldn't be dragging mud and dirt, sand throughout the entire building.
They have different hours for them.
Correct, separate entrance.
I remember all that.
We did a lot of that work in-house. I know that, um, Ed and, uh, George and, and a lot of that work was done in-house. I'm just, um, right in line with you. I'm not sure I'd, I'd say yes in February either, but I, I just, you know, we're. We don't have the money right now, frankly, you know, if, if I can't put, uh, central AC in my house because I just don't have the money right now, but I'm not gonna rob Peter the PayPal in order to put central AC in my house. I just, this isn't, this isn't something I think we need right now. I think there's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be done on it. I'd love to talk to the employees, find out what they're thinking.
I'm not gonna disagree whether we need it or not. My concern is this is not the process we normally do things through, right? They come through, all capital improvements, especially something this large, comes through a normal capital improvement plan cycle. This is off-cycle, this is not voted on by anyone by us, it hasn't been in. As far as I know, the finance committee hasn't looked at it. We haven't weighed it against every other capital project that's coming up. So we shouldn't be saying, "We have this money and we can spend it," and not offer it to any other capital project that could come up that might have a higher priority. We're taking one that is like ours and saying it should have a higher priority than all the ones that we don't know about. And that's not right.
So I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of helping town hall employees do their jobs better and making them more comfortable. So I would, you know, if this came up in the course of regular, a regular list of things that we wanted to do to town hall, I would be, I would be pushing for it and I would prioritize it over many other things. But I, I ha, I do kind of have to agree with Mark. It's like, why does this one get to jump the line? I'm also a little nervous that we are going with the lowest bidder and reducing the bid to the point where we just have barely enough money to do it because that's a recipe for overruns, change orders, and then suddenly we have fifty thousand dollars we have to find in order to finish the project because Unicon lowballed it and then in, tried to make up their money on, on change orders and stuff. So I'm not saying that will happen, but it does make me a little nervous. And I, I, you know, I feel bad that, that this, their existing space didn't work out because I was on the board when this all went down and it was like, put together as like, "We're gonna move down there. It's gonna be great, we're all gonna be together." So clearly some of that worked, but then obviously there are things about that space that are suboptimal. And I'm sorry, I, it would suck to be sitting in there in the summer and frying or freezing in the winter. And I don't wish that on anyone, but, um, it's very frustrating to see all of this effort be put into moving them there. And now it's like, "Well, it didn't work out, we're gonna move them back."
Well, it's not that it, well, okay, so the building is older than it, than it was. It was looked at to accommodate contractors. It, it, it accommodates a lot more than that now. The, the staff has expanded. You're also dealing with files, you're also dealing with HIPAA issues with, uh, the Board of Health and the public nurse that we have. And it's, it's, uh, there is, I mean, if you read the comments and read, uh, read the memo of what they say, th, this is coming from them.
I agree, I, I understand and, and, but to be, to be fair, the Board of Health and the health director was in the cards when this was created. The conservation department and the planning department were all in, were all part of this plan originally to move down there together. So maybe there was a lack of foresight and I, I'm not trying to make light of the issues. Clearly there are problems with the space.
I guess, I mean.
So I'm, that's all I have to say.
On that one small point, I'd say that, you know, when Liz wanted to expand her, um, staff for the new building, we said, "Wait and see how it goes and then we'll go from there." You know, we waited to see how it goes and it's not going real well. So I think, I mean, I think that's perfectly valid. They didn't know Lauren was coming on, for example.
Yeah.
The nurse thing, I don't, I don't know whether they, they knew that was coming or not. But I have a question about, um, we know the AC is broken. What is the status of the heat?
Kenny, do you know that answer? Can you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The heat works fine. Yeah, um, George goes around and just thermostats, it's kind of an older heating. So there's a bunch of thermostats throughout the whole first floor. So he's adjusting the thermostats, but the, the heat is fine right now.
Um, how long do we think that this project would take once it's awarded?
To be safe, I would say probably, uh, eight weeks.
So there would be time to either know that we're staying, that folks are staying where they are and we need to pay for some repairs and upgrades to the HVAC or?
Before next summer.
Yeah, or that they're moving and so we can leave the, the AC the way it is and put our money towards a move.
Because we would decide in February?
Yeah. So that's, that's fine. I just don't want, I mean, I really don't think it's acceptable for, for the town to say, you know, sit around in, in, in the heat over the summer.
I agree.
So what about soft costs? Like how much do we think we would need in terms of new desks and?
Nothing.
New tables?
Taking their stuff. And then plus there's leftovers from school administration that, that was one of the questions, uh, I had asked today when I met with the team and there was, yeah, I mean, there was, there was, there's, there's no plans for any of that.
So there's room to, for the, for the plans to spread out? I know that's been a sore point.
Right, that is, uh, ex, exactly.
Okay.
This, uh, uh, in, in regards to cutting the line with, with the capital projects, this is, this was not the intent. No way did we think this was going to be a hundred and, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar job. We, you know, quite honestly, we, you know, there was anticipation, could it be forty, fifty, sixty thousand to do all of that? Yeah, okay, you're in the, you're, you're in that neighborhood. But, um, uh, this is, uh, but there is, and I, I think it's, um, I do think it should go first. It should go now and not wait till February, not wait and for all of that. And we do, there is the money there to do that right now. This project is important for, for the staff and for the team. And they are extremely patient and, and, uh, by just reading some of those, some of those, some of those, uh, challenges, um, I think it's, uh, I think it's, it's, it's the right thing to do.
But I'll throw it back that we shouldn't be up here deciding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of expenses that we happen to have extra money. If this was so important, we should have put it on the warrant and been discussing it last Tuesday with every other project. That's how we do projects in this town. We don't sit up here and decide these things because there's extra money. If another department had extra money and wanted to funnel it to a project like this, we would be up here slamming our fist saying, "That's not right." And we've done that to other departments that have done this. So we shouldn't be the ones that are saying, "Well, it's okay for us." There's a process in this town and this is not it.
So you think it needs to go to town meeting?
It should. It should go through like every other capital project. Yes.
I agree. The timing wasn't there to make last Tuesday's. Okay. Message received.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm not sure that I agree that it needs to go to town meeting. I'd wanna know a little bit more about precedent. I think, um, this is a fairly small project. I think the money is on hand, um, so I would wanna look into it a little more. But if we went through Super Saturday and everybody was in agreement that this was a reasonable outlay, then I would be okay moving forward after that. If we wait till May for approval, the project isn't starting until July and.
I'll, I'll agree to revisit it after Super Saturday.
I agree as well. I think like comparing it with what else we have to spend money on is, is kind of the most important thing to me. And making sure that everybody knows that we're spending the money on this, like FinCom and, you know, and the Permanent Municipal Building Committee and some of the other people who are responsible for spending money in, in, you know, responsible ways that have to do with our structures.
And I think there's a little bit, um, there is an analogy to the orchard here where, you know, we took it to town meeting and they said, "Don't sell." So we moved ahead with renting because they told us not to sell, right? So, but, so we presented an option for Shattuck Street and the response was, "No, you need to stay where you are and you need to stay put and that's all we want for now." So this is how we stay put.
So the next question is, how much have we spent on this building in the past four years? How much is the building worth?
Yeah, that's, that's a question I had too, was the tripwire.
Oh.
Yeah. Right. So we need to run those numbers.
Understood, thank you.
George is, is it brief?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a quick question here.
Sure.
Anyone, uh, is this, is this a part that, uh, Michelle, that could do for us?
It's a great question. It's worth looking into. Thank you. All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, got it. All right, let's talk about special town meeting. I think obviously a lot of things worked really well, um, at town meeting. I think, um, I've had a couple of suggestions for where, for some things that I think we can change or look into for the future. I think there's obviously a case for childcare when there is something on the warrant that is, um, that speaks to parents with young children. I think it'll be, the question is, you know, is that, if we provide childcare on meetings when that isn't a factor, are we going, you know, are we gonna see, um, see it utilized? Because that's always been rejoinder, right, is, you know, we tried childcare and, and people just didn't use it. But I think it's worth trying again.
We could see how many registrations we get.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and staff accordingly, assuming that there'll be maybe roughly twice as many people who show up as register, which is like.
Great ratio.
I mean, you know, okay, that's fine, but I, I, if we can swing it and if we can find people who are willing to support, to volunteer to do it, yeah.
Well, and that's what I was gonna lead into is, um, I do not think we can assume, nor should we even ask for, you know, the teaching staff or the Parks and Rec staff to volunteer their time twice a year for this. I think it should be, um, part of the costs of running town meeting is paying for childcare services. But the question is, is where do we get them? I mean, I think one of the reasons that it worked out as well as it did and that folks used it as much as they did is because it was, um, caregivers that parents were familiar with and that they knew.
Trust them.
Based on who they were, that they could trust them. So I think it's gonna be a bit of a challenge to be able to match that, um, in the future.
Like, see if we could hire like Tigerston staff.
Yeah.
For, I mean, for town meeting.
Tigerston, um.
And Parks and Rec staff.
Yeah.
Yep. Is there, um, and teachers, the problem with paying, uh? Yep. Is there, um, and teachers, the problem with paying, um, teachers is the union, they're unionized, right? So that's, that's where it gets tricky.
A lot of Tigerston staff is also union, because they're usually T.A.s.
Okay.
Right.
So that would be something, but I, I would like to see it, I would like to see childcare included in our, um, costs of town meeting for February. The other thing I was gonna suggest is that we put a survey out. There's been a lot of talk, um, about whether weeknights are the best way, or what's the most feasible for the most number of people. I think it would be a good idea for us to go ahead and put out a survey and find out. Ask folks to rank, you know, what days of the week work best for you, and how many hours, how late are you willing to stay? How late are you willing, would you want childcare available if you brought your children, that kind of thing? So that we can sort of fine tune things a little bit more.
I would add, how many hours are you willing to attend, right?
Mm-hmm.
Two.
When you, when you start, when you, you know, what's the start time?
Yes, yeah, what's the best, what's your best start time? Yep. We talked about this, um, I think, Mark, you talked to me about it, where there's a town that splits town meeting into one night of debate and one night of voting.
I think I've heard, yeah.
I mean, I know that there's some towns that do multiple nights, like ten, like eight nights. You know, they have...
Wellesley.
One or, yeah, one or two warrant articles a night.
Those are, those are also, uh...
Are they representative, okay.
Which prolongs, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to see, um, I'd, I'd like to see that on the survey, to see if folks are interested in that, or whether it's, it's a non-starter for most of the town.
I think that would probably just reduce the attendance at each night even more.
Maybe.
I mean, you know, we saw what, what we always see, which is big turnout for one item. And then it's down to three hundred people, which is what we always see.
Which is what we generally have.
I, I, you know, I know that representative has issues, but I honestly feel like the town is too big for a regular town meeting at this point. We're, we, for the last ten years, or as long as I've been here, basically, it's always been the same. There's been a big vote, the gym is full, and, but for almost the rest of the night, it's a few hundred people.
Which I would argue is basically representative. There's already those people there.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's just self-selecting instead of voting.
Yeah, but there's a difference in, in who, who gets a voice, right? The way things are now versus representative.
And who can pick the vote.
I don't know if there is, in practical fact. I think that the people who become the representatives are the ones who are attending now. Like, in other words, if you're worried about a disenfranchised group not being represented at, in the current schema, and then being more represented in a representative government, I'm not sure that those people are going to elect someone that's gonna represent them in a representative town meeting. Because I don't think they...
But they'd be electing them at least.
But they may, no, they may, they may not be engaged at all.
I don't know. I think, I mean, I, I would feel very differently if I was, if my state senator was making a decision versus three hundred random people who managed to show up.
That's true.
I mean, you know, but there's just, which three hundred, and do I...
Okay.
You know?
If I may, to that end, and, um, and filling the, the room with, the library with childcare is, is awesome, and I'm glad that it was well utilized, it was well organized. But there were some that felt as though, it's almost like redlining. Like, you, you, you basically stacked the house by, by doing that. So if we're going to do what we really should, offer it, that, every town meeting, and I agree with you that we should fund it.
Yeah.
Have that be part of the, uh, the elections fund, and then the, um, town meeting fund, and that kind of thing. But we can't, um, we can't pick and choose which town meetings we're gonna stack the room, essentially.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of other logistics, so we'd have to be prepared for the, for the large turnout. So not only increasing the clickers as, as, as you've, you've all heard from Diane, but then there's also, do we rent the chairs, or do we just go and buy the chairs? And we're talking about six hundred chairs. Maybe if not, maybe more, maybe even, I think it was maybe even more than that. And, uh, so you got that, and then you have other storage issues. So, and Diane had made the suggestion today, during the department head meeting, of maybe the tech builds a, you know, a shed behind the school that is, that's where there would be certain storage for, not, not the new voting machines, because they would get, they would stay where they are. But everything else that's bumping into the, the new storage machine. So, you know, you would, we would have those logistics to take care of also.
Should be able to calculate pretty easily the cost of when it, when we break even on renting versus buying chairs.
There's probably a lot of chairs that were underutilized. If you look at, like, between the fire department, and the police department, and the library, or in the senior center, there's probably a bunch of chairs. We just don't know how to move them all.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's, I mean, what's, what's the cost of...
Right.
Man hours to move them all, you know, versus buy them, put them in the shed?
It's not, it's not the, um, I don't think it's necessarily the, the cost, I think the availability. We may be in conflict of, of something else in, especially May. So you look at graduations in different places they may, I don't know.
Right, right.
Well, they would be used at the, at the middle school.
Yeah.
For the graduations and their different awards and stuff.
So I thought staff did yeoman's effort, I mean, Nancy, Diane, LCTV, Mark. Everyone did an awesome job.
Yep.
The one thing that I would have liked to seen differently is, I would have liked to seen a, a view of the cafeteria from the gym, right? Because it felt like, I don't even know how many people were in there, right? It was like two, two different meetings, almost, like, we had, I had no sense of what was going on in the gym or, or in the cafeteria, right? It would have been nice to have more of a way of making it feel inclusive.
Did they, did they have the view of the...
I assume they could see us, but we couldn't see this circuit.
I could, I could from my seat, I could see.
There were a couple times, there were a couple times when I saw a shot of the cafeteria on the screen. But it was just a couple.
Could the cafeteria see, see the gym?
I watched it back, and I didn't enter the meeting until about eight thirty. I was jockeying back and forth. There was just a screenshot briefly, and five minutes into the town meeting, after that, you saw nothing. There was no awareness, to your point, Mark, there was no awareness that when Amelies tried to move the question, immediately the second person in debate, roughly around eight fifteen, there was no awareness that all the people, that many people in the cafeteria were openly applauding, encouraging, yes, take the motion, et cetera.
But could the cafeteria see what was happening in the gym?
Yes, because there was the continual feed of the people at the front panelists, what was all the speakers. But vice versa, what's the part that was missed that, that Mark was speaking?
I haven't got something in the notes.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, look, the subject matter is for discussion.
Yeah, we had a monitor in front of Diane and Tim.
Yeah.
That showed just that camera.
Okay.
So they could always see if someone was up to the mic. And I would have loved to have cut to that camera, because we did a lot of work to get it set up, and it wasn't used, and the mic wasn't used. So it's too bad. I wish more people had gotten up to speak in that room, because it would have been cool.
I wish more people from that room came into the big room. So there was less talking. Okay.
Anyway, that's, I just wanted to let you know that, that, that was the plan, so that they could see if someone was there.
It's good to know that Tim could see what was going on in the other room. So theoretically, he saw them applauding when you moved the question.
Would it be possible, Mark, to, to have a screen up for the audience in the gym to see, maybe not hear, at off times, at non-mic times, but could they see what was happening?
We send two feeds to both projectors, and they just happen to both be the same. We could put different ones to different screens if you wanted to, just have the gym up on one.
Picture on picture?
We can do picture, we can do all sorts of things. You can get the game on, if there's a game on.
That is how we boost attendance.
That's right. That'll get people in.
That's why I saw Diane watching. You said it was the calf, she was watching the game.
Oh, it's funny. All right, thanks.
Just kidding, Diane.
That's helpful, Mark.
I'd like to give you a little...
George, one second, please.
Uh, I think, um, obviously also entrance times were an issue. So the fact that, I know that they're way, it's much quicker than it used to be.
Yeah.
But clearly, if there were people standing outside at, at seven thirty wanting to get in, I'm not sure what else they can do.
Just watching it, we have that hallway that goes to the locker rooms.
Yeah.
And there's a doorway there that the fire chief often stands at.
Yeah.
I think if we were able to funnel people down that hallway and have them come in there, that have the tables along either side of the hallway there.
Because I did notice...
You're pulling people out of that, that foyer.
I did notice that the last, the last registrar was almo, almost never had someone in front of her, because people didn't realize they could just keep walking in, and, and there were like six stations. So there were four stations in use, one that was half in use, and then the last one was like occasionally someone would show up.
So that might be as easy as giving everybody, all the volunteers, something to hold up, to say, you know...
Or just arrange the table so that the people, the people at the door can see all the tables when they appear.
Just have to do with the bridges there.
Yeah, something like that.
George, thank you for waiting.
Chair, um, with regards to the cafeteria there, uh, I set up four hundred, I mean, three hundred and sixty chairs there. That was four hundred chairs ordered. And I taken forty chairs from there, and brought them over to the gymnasium, which had already set up five hundred and fifty-nine in there, plus the forty, which is one short of, uh, one, uh, six, six hundred there. And, and the bleachers, I believe each section, I believe there's five sections, and I believe there's seventy-three seats in each section there. So that's why before, when we did the alumni field, there was the nine seventy-five that was in there. So when you count that out, the six hundred that we put on the floor of the chairs, and you count the bleachers there, uh, that's quite a bit.
Yeah.
For the number of people there. And I was telling to the police officer, he said that it was a wraparound with regards to the people out there through the parking lot, and they were standing around the building. So I don't know how you're gonna, um, change the logistic there, because those that had children, they went up the hallway to the cafeteria. And then you had the people there, and they were checking in the people, and calling people to come over, you know, and there was eight people there. So I think as far as the number of people came out, thank God that we didn't get the number that you really was talking about, the twelve hundred. God knows when that meeting would have started.
And that's, parking is another issue.
Parking is another issue, yeah. Yeah, um, I heard great feedback on having the path lit up, so thank you to whoever suggested that. But I think, um, if we can, I don't know what the right word is, but sort of make the shuttle from Shattuck a, um, something that happens every time, and that folks can rely on, and that goes past the start time for, for a little bit.
Yeah, it stopped at seven.
Mm-hmm.
It stopped at, yeah.
It stopped at seven, yeah, which is a start time.
I thought it was going until nine.
Yeah, so I think we can, there's some tweaking we can do there to help things.
Okay.
What else does, do folks have?
I mean, I, the presentations were good.
Presentations worked great.
You know, the A.V. was great. I could hear everything.
Um...
The voting worked.
Yep.
A-plus, would attend again.
Imagine if you had to hand count?
Nope.
I can imagine.
It's not.
There would be the trail mix left.
Go ahead, Mark. Uh, Rob?
Let's just say, I think you've got a real opportunity with the town meeting report, that all the consideration I think they're giving, and will give, to use that in the future, town meeting reports, front voted, front pages, sort of thing, with regard to, here's what we're providing, here's what we're asking of you, and the part that I implore you to consider is, ask people and tell them, we need you to be here at half hour before the meeting, or fifteen minutes. We physically can't get all of you through, as evidenced by this experience. All the volunteers, and all the good work that's done, stool's gonna leave it. People show up at ten minutes before the meeting, it's just not possible.
And also, you're, we're gonna run out of parking spaces, so considering parking at Shattuck Street and taking the shuttle.
Correct, and so all of your efforts, I mentioned to somebody, I think it's somewhat like a wedding. For weddings, we just routinely accept, you need to park and satellite things and be brought in, and you need to be sitting there waiting for fifteen, twenty minutes before the wedding begins. And I think town meeting needs to at least consider that as an option, to try to start a meeting with everybody able to view it, hear it, participate, et cetera.
I think ideally, we would have all our shuttle hours and information, and childcare hours and information ready in time to publish it in the, in the report, so folks can plan and plan for that.
I was just saying, Elise had her hand up. I do have something after you, Mark.
Elise?
So I think it would be huge to have some kind of doors open at, um, so, you know, like, doors open at six, get her early, because, I mean, a huge part of the delay in getting a meeting even started, you know, then you've got the people leaving because they had a hard stop at eight, and it was like, oh. Additionally, we heard from Chief McCurdy that we were within double digits of...
Of cap, capacity?
Capacity. And that, I think that people left, like, we, we could have easily been at capacity, like, that could have happened, no problem. Like, but, you know, people, people left the line. And so the question there was, does town meeting just shut down at that point, and everybody leaves?
Yep.
You know? So obviously, not every meeting is gonna be this enormous, but it's important to be like, this is our stress test. Like, we need to have these things in place, or, you know, assuming democracy, everybody gets excited, and everybody, you know, floods town meeting always, you know?
Yeah.
What is the solution to that? Like, that was, I, I heard... I heard the rumor, and I was like, no.
It's our biggest venue.
Is it the biggest venue?
It is the biggest venue.
That's what I've been told.
The high school's... High school gymnasium.
Yeah.
I thought, no, because it's fixed seating.
The auditorium's fixed seating.
The auditorium is, and we can, that's our spillover. And we have the library as well there.
And we've had...
Cafeteria.
We did it, why did we do that one year at the high school?
They did the auditorium at Swer. And, uh, well, the auditorium also has the problem, like, if everyone's seating, like, to get to the microphone...
It's literally, they have somebody with like a, a boom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I do think we should consider, look again at the high school, consider the, whether it has better parking, and use the gym at the high school instead of the middle school gym, if they're comparable sizes. Because there's better overflow areas at the high school. You can overflow into the calf, you can use the kiva, you can overflow into the auditorium, there's a lot more room. Parking might be more of an issue, right?
But it's got a bigger parking lot than Russell Street and, and the middle school.
I don't think so when you combine them.
You don't think so?
But, but, but it's something to consider.
You have thirty-six, too.
We've got thirty-six, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good point.
That helps, yeah.
Same hands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's also just, you know, the max capacity of the building as per fire code or whatever.
Right.
We could have squeezed a ton more people into the middle school, like...
Right.
Physically. So, you know, is there a way to simulcast to cover a few different buildings? I mean, this is like getting into technology, you know? To that end, I, I know LCTV were heroic at, at town meeting, and I feel like we're only gonna be asking more of them. So some kind of stipend for LCTV for town meeting would be really great, if some of that comes to the budget.
If we're gonna keep asking more.
Yeah, especially if we're gonna be asking one to, like, create new technology.
Yeah.
I think we should ask, um, the, the fire chief, because the capacity of the building is much higher than the number that we were getting to.
Oh.
But I think it's the number of people that he has available. So I'm not, I'm not certain.
Oh, I thought it was the capacity of that room is where we were heading.
Did you?
The gym, I think, was the capacity.
I thought it was the gym plus the cafeteria, but...
We can ask him.
Ask him.
But it had to include the kids, too, so it would have included all the classrooms that the kids were in, if that were the case.
I, I'm, I'm not certain, but it's a question to ask, just to make sure that we have the, the right... Go ahead.
Nope, I'm good. I was just suggesting we maybe wanna re-explore the high school.
Yeah.
So, so...
The, um, more of an aesthetic thing than anything. I'd love to see the, the school do something better with the flag than hanging off the balcony, or, it's not even off the balcony, it's up the top of the sheetrock. That, and, um, in Stonem, they... That and, um, in Stonem, they have, it's an old, it's almost like Indian Hills auditorium. They have an old pipe organ and it's somebody that plays the pipe organ while people are. Not that I wanna get a pipe organ, we're not gonna put that in Diane's budget too. But if we, if we brought in, if we had, I, I know Damon Abbott's plays, plays a lot of, you know, gigs with his electronic piano, but maybe we roll a piano in and then, you know, we use Lauren Hagberg to sing the anthem, maybe there's some kids that could, you know.
Kelly's music.
Yeah, Kelly's.
Just whatever it is, just to, you know, to have something to, to the jazz. Yeah. Little Kenny Chee. Uh, the flaggers are crazy though.
Could we, um, are you guys on board with the, with, um, a survey?
Yeah.
All right. Let's move forward with that, please. Um.
With the objective of, of finding out what worked, what day of the week, what time of day, that kind of stuff.
What worked, what didn't work.
Yeah.
What would get you a ten?
Yep.
Cookies.
Well, it was open at six and National Honor Society's got a big sale, so.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah. So, yeah, just, um, mo- logistical questions for, you know, what, uh, what's your best start time? What's your best day? Would you use a shuttle service from, would you, you know, use childcare?
It also shows that we're, we're trying to improve upon.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the goal, right? Trying to see if there, if I had any other notes.
From a personal point of view, I think it would be helpful if there was a TV in front of us. Because looking at the things behind us is really difficult.
Yeah, that's true. It's kinda selfish, but.
I'm, I, I agree with that. It's a low priority, but it is extremely hard to look at the presentations.
Well, if I do press with the fin con too.
Well, they have one off to the side that's a little easier. It's at an angle where they do the closed captioning and things they can see. But yes.
Do you hear that, Mark?
They could do individual screens for us, that would be fine too.
Tablet.
Just get some VR glasses, why not? We can wear headsets.
All right. Nobody has anything else, we'll move on. To the town administrator, update please.
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the select board, um, a few, uh, a few things. So we are continuing the process with the Collins Center for the Class and Comp that Personal Advisory Committee likes to, we have done it e- every three years. So there were some, uh, some discrepancies on what was reported and so the team is circling back to the Collins Center with specific questions about that. So we'll keep you updated on, on that. Also wanted to, the Habitat for Humanity coordinated with Habit, uh, the EHS coordinated with Habitat for Humanity of a veteran household, getting a grant for a new roof. Coordinating with Veterans Agent Wilson to secure additional benefits. It was, um, the, the job description for an EHS office coordinator to the Personal Advisory Committee was submitted on ten twenty-nine and awaiting next steps from, from HR. The Bachi Court was fixed.
What was wrong with it?
It, okay, so.
It's a whole thing.
It was fixed, so somebody kept winning all the money.
Oh, I see. Fixed.
The specs that were written were incorrect, even though the, the subcontractor who was gonna install it questioned it. And the answer back to, to the installer was, from the architect was, do it according to spec. And what was basically happening was they had the membrane down, then they had crushed, then they had stone on top of it. It should be the opposite. And then on top of, and then on top, because if you did it the opposite, then you'd have the stone dust packed down on top of the membrane. So with the stones on, on the, on the crust, they would creep up because of the weather and things like that. So they would, as a settlement, so it would keep up. So they, the Bachi balls would be, as the term was, they keep hitting boulders. On it, so on the Bachi court. So it was something of, and then it was a matter of a finger pointing, who's gonna fix it, who's gonna pay for it? And it was, uh, basically it was a fifty-five, sixty thousand dollar fix.
Who paid for it?
Uh, the contractor paid it and he, uh, he did it. So, uh, but it's back up and running now and already they're getting requests for a second one, um, according to that.
Rooftop?
Rooftop.
Rooftop, what, what could go wrong?
Flooring issue still being worked with Commodore Builders, uh, and, uh, sending a legal notice to the flooring subcontractor because that is, uh, that is an ongoing issue. In October two hundred and thirty, um, people were assisted by outreach, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four programs sign-ins and two hundred and thirty-three programs helped. Now, this time last year it was just under a thousand. So there's the volume, right there.
If you build it, they will come.
That's right.
That's right. Five fifty King Street, a, uh, the permit, a permit was, was pulled for expanding the office space of, for hyper-global. That is the first tenant that went in, they're just continuing their, their expansion, uh, their expansion plans, take up even more space. Northern Bank, uh, the contractor's waiting on mass DOT permit to pour the sidewalk, they're expecting approval any day. Owner would prefer to connect to the town sewer and not septic system on the property and a tentative opening date would be in early January. We don't know what the, um, plans are specifically for the other, for the rest of the area with the rest of what was proposed, so Tony's gonna follow up with that.
So the, the bank building's gonna open in January?
Correct.
Okay.
That's anticipated, that's, that, that's, that's.
Um, it's looked done for like months though. Hasn't it looked like right on the verge of opening for like eight weeks?
The, the Board of Health, last, last week's flu clinic on October twenty-first of the middle school had a hundred and fifty-two participants. A slight increase from last year, uh, last year's event. And a nu- number of town staff also have participated and, uh, the health director team is looking to potentially do a staff-only clinic next year if there is sufficient interest, which is, which is great, which would be great. And that would not deter any residents there, make sure that, that whoever the residents, uh, want it, there, there'll be enough, uh, vaccines there. So, uh, in Shaker Lane CM at Risk Pre-Qualification Committee, we have eight proposals from various, various companies and the team is, the committee is reviewing all of those and we will be meeting on, this week, we'll be meeting on Thursday to go over, uh, our, uh, results of, uh, on the scoring. Let me see. There is a balance for the Phase One Mass Works Grant, there's balance above four hundred thousand dollars left and what, uh, what that is doing, so the engineering firm, Filippoli, had, I signed the, uh, the amendment today for what they wanna do with the extra four hundred thousand dollars there. If you can just, uh, please bear with me for one, uh, second.
This is for infrastructure that's inside the campus, if you will?
Correct. I mean, it's what, what they're really, I just wanna get the correct terminology, um, just to, just to, just to make sure for everyone here is. What it's gonna provide, um, uh, okay, it's going to propose subsurface infiltration basin, which is, uh, it's really looking at stormwater runoff, uh, in, in, in just, uh, an area that, uh, they thought would be advantageous, uh, for the, uh, for the project.
Why were they so far under what they expected to spend?
Yeah, it was really aggressive bids that were received on Phase One. And for Phase Two, the, the bids were, are gonna be aggressive also, so there'll still be money left on the table there too. So if we don't spend the, all of it, it goes back to the state.
Right, so we'll just find other things to do with it, right?
Exactly, it's gotta be.
Star Hill gets paid.
Sure.
It's on a drawdown, so we just wouldn't get it, yeah.
And, uh, okay, so, uh, Mass Works Grant. Business, as you saw from the update, the business recognition mailer that, uh, was, um, I'm gonna be sending out. So we got a, a price for cards, not including the, the postage, for a hundred and thirty-five dollars and I think there's approximately three hundred businesses with certificates for them to be, for them to do highlighting. And, um, we received an earmark, uh, that was, uh, we were told from the current state budget through Representative Arciaro's efforts and for sixty thousand dollars. And, uh, we, that is most recent, we just received today. The chairwoman and myself received an invitation for a big check, big check presentation. And lastly, Civic Leadership Academy, uh, you have a proposed timeline and Tony has been, uh, taking this, uh, and running with it and, uh, the proposed program run from February, uh, through May and featuring weekly Wednesday evening sessions that will highlight town departments through presentations, Q and A discussions, and facility tours. And, uh, so the planning and curriculum development will occur, will occur through January of twenty twenty si- twenty twenty-six and expecting about twenty twenty-five residents, that's, that's the goal. And then a graduation event will be held at the annual town meeting.
What, what was the earmark for?
Sixty thousand dollars.
What was it, what designed to be spent on?
It was, it, it's the, um, the revitalization roadmap. Roadmap for, uh, the town square. That was something done that I believe was in two thousand and nineteen, that UMass, uh, the Donahue Institute did it and, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, Myron was quite happy that it, uh, that it act, that it came through, so.
That was something we asked the Mass Works Grant for and were denied basically. We, we didn't get the Mass Works Grant this year for something similar.
And the day for the, um.
No, that, that, that was a different amount for the, the five that we submitted for most recently. Yeah, that wasn't, that sixty grand wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't one of it because we already had the earmark. It was just a matter of when the governor was gonna release the ear, earmark and she has. I'm sorry, Madam Chairwoman.
Oh, it's all right, I was just gonna ask, what was the day for the big check?
Uh, I think it's gonna be a week from Friday.
Okay, so.
At eleven?
Yeah, can any of you guys make it, 'cause I can't.
Uh, send it out and I'll let you know for sure.
It's the fourteenth.
I could do it.
It's up in the air anyway, 'cause, um, I think Jamie said that he couldn't be there, so I don't know. We don't know yet whether they're gonna stick with that, but that's what they threw out initially, is the fourteenth.
If I can have, uh, one more, uh, one more, one more. So, uh, we have coming up Veterans Day. So, uh, it is, uh, will be held, um, at, at the Common on, on Veterans Day at, uh, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five at eleven AM. And also, uh, the, the, the VSO would like to formally extend an invitation to the select board and to attend the, the event.
He said eleven?
Yes. More detailed plans will, uh, will be, will be, will be coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a ribbon cutting date for the sewer yet? Do we know? I thought they were doing their final testing, it was supposed to be in November.
Should be a flushing, not a, not a ribbon cutting. I'll be here all week.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't have a date yet, do we know when that will happen?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. And, um, the senior center, uh, we were supposed to get a credit for the, from the back for the solar panels we put on. Ryan was going to be looking at that at one point, he was driving that, the thirty percent, um, IRA.
Tax benefit.
The equivalent of the tax benefit, we should make sure we don't lose that money. Okay.
Is it a rebate for?
It, the, well, if you, you know, if you did it on your own, you got a thirty percent tax credit. But since the town doesn't pay taxes, there was another way we were getting money back. Ryan knew something about it, I, I think if you, Ryan Forbes might know something about it or. It's the same thing they're gonna use for the school, uh, with the, um, the geothermal.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, there was that credit they, they could apply for. So it's the same thing.
Okay.
While it's available, we should use it.
Do you want me to reach out to my own?
Thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
All right. Hit it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ryan Matthews seconded by Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.